I'm going to call a meeting to order. And the first order of business is the approval of October minutes, which were emailed to us. So if there are no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve without reading.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second that.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Excuse me. Okay, first on the agenda is case 22-27 at 168 through 172 Maverick Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anthony Rossi here on behalf of the petitioner. I do have Rick Salvo from Engineering Alliance, who is a civil engineer on this. And I have David Choi, who is the architect of record on this in present. And if we may, John, do you happen to have the PDF on?
I just want to remind everybody to speak into the microphones.
Yep. By way of history, this project was previously a commercial structure on the site. And it was demolished. My client purchased the building. He actually, I believe he actually, prior to my representation, was talking to the city and also other neighbors. And they wanted to shrink the size of the project. So we worked with the city and the neighbors and the butters to do something in the councilman at the time to something that was more amenable. So the only relief we're seeking, everything is dimensional compliant. Could I take this with me, John? And walk over?
Yes.
And on the dimensional compliance chart, you can see it here. The only thing is the amount of units is triggered by square footage. And that's the only variance that's being sought. Other than that, the setback, the front yard, the open space, side yard setback, everything is totally compliant. So essentially, it's going to be four townhouses, which will have two parking spaces inside the structure on each one. You could essentially put two parking spaces in front of it if you wanted to. But they will have two parking spaces in each unit for that. There'll be three bedroom units. They'll have green space for each unit. Trash will be inside each, you know, individual homes. This is not a rental project, as you can tell. This is going to be strictly for condos, townhomes for families to move into. And this was something that when we talked to the neighbors and the butters, this is what they really wanted to see at this location. So we redesigned it to make it something that people can want to live into and move into and raise a family into. So this is why we designed this project that way. And the aesthetics of the project are defined. And I can have David talk a little bit about how the exterior is going to look like. But as far as talking a little bit about the drainage on the property since the site plan, we have five cul-de-sacs systems on each side of the building that will take all the groundwater. So there'll be 10 cul-de-sacs systems to absorb the groundwater coming off the building, the structure. So it's far better than what's actually on the site now. And now, dimensional wise, we made it as compliant that we could make it. The only thing we couldn't change was the amount of units because we could not make that dimensionally compliant. Because four units, you'd have to get relief from the ZBA for. But everything else that we could control, meaning the front yard setback, side yard, rear yard, open space, green space, everything else is dimensionally compliant, including open floor space on it. And David, could you talk briefly about what the aesthetics of the structure is going to look like?
Good evening, everyone. David Choi, architect. The aesthetics of the project is based on traditional townhouse typology. And we wanted to reduce the massing of the building by introducing a mansard roof on the top level with dormers. And we also wanted to introduce traditional bay window projections, just to make it look like a townhouse. Again, it's, you would see this sort of like a brownstone typology, but just a little wider. And so I wanted to take that motif from a brownstone, a traditional brownstone, which is you see in downtown in Chelsea. So I wanted to replicate that. You see a lot of this typology where you have the double bay window projections at the two outer corners. It's actually, the east side is similar in design to the Maverick Street side. So we wanted to take the same architectural motif on both sides.
And the only thing I would like to add is, as you can see, it goes a full block essentially. So you have entrances coming from the rear of the building for two units and entrances coming from the front of the building for two units. So it's almost like two townhomes on one street and two townhomes on the other street. And I would note that because it's a four-family structure, I believe even though it's two and two, I think it would have to be sprinkled and fire alarmed anyways. So as far as life safety is concerned, it will be definitely a far bigger benefit than what currently is on the site, too. And we do have trees and other shrubs on it. And that's all subject to design review with the city anyways for those conditions. But that's essentially the project. And I'll gladly answer any questions this board may have.
Have you engaged with Green Roots or Boston University or the folks running the Sea Heat project about this proposal?
I'm sorry, did you say Boston University?
Mm-hmm.
No, I didn't. Is, I didn't know, does Boston University have affiliation with this project?
So I don't know if you're, I guess you're not aware that Green Roots, a local organization...
I know Green Roots. I've dealt with Green Roots many times in the past.
Do you know about their Cool Block project? Because they actually targeted this exact neighborhood, this, a very small section of the neighborhood, as being the hottest area in Chelsea. And they're working with some researchers at Boston University to make small improvements in the area to bring the temperature of the area down. So like, for example, they're negotiating with the Boys and Girls Club to try and put a white roof on their building. They're, they have very specific trees that they're planting in the area. They're working with the city to do different things with the sidewalks. And I think changing the color of the road and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I dealt with Green Roots in the past. And certainly, we can certainly talk to them in the future. I know that the city here, especially with John, with design review, they have pretty strong control of how the exterior of the building is going to look like, the landscaping and so forth. And will certainly work hand in hand with any conditions that this board may have with design review. And as far as aesthetics and trees and shrubs, that's all in the purview of the planning director with John anyways. Because he would have to okay all that. And usually, he, I mean, I don't want to speak for John, but usually tells you what type of trees you want to see and the shrubs you want to see and the color of the building you want to see and all that stuff. So that's why I didn't really talk too extensive there because there's a pretty extensive process we go through through any post approvals, if that happened. That'd be conditioned upon him saying yes on that. But I'll certainly work hand in hand with Green Roots and with John on to that effect. But I didn't talk about it because I know that's usually one of the conditions they put on any approvals or conditions that John has full purview on that. And we'll work hand in hand with him on that.
So, I mean, it's, John, it's really important to me to see, you know, for this project going forward, that there is some collaboration and advising by Green Roots and the folks who are trying to, like, do this very targeted effort at cooling down the area. So is that the sort of thing where, John, would you be, do you plan to be, like, integrating that into the, what comes after the approval? Or should we kind of like try and see if we can hold off on the approval?
I would suggest that you put it as a recommended condition of the plan, of approval.
Okay.
I think that the simplest solution would be to require a white roof. I'm sure the architects are familiar with TPO roofs.
I mean, listen, if we can make a green roof and make it, you know, sustainable, we'll certainly go look into a white roof. I mean, the price of roofs these days, I don't think really, it matters too much. It's usually $1,000, $1,200 a square, whether you put asphalt or shingle or a white roof or black roof. So that's not something that we would be deterring about, correct, David? So that's fine. And we gladly would work with that, with the city and with design review and so forth.
Yeah, I'm not in a position to suggest, like, specific changes that I want to see because I'm not an expert in this, but I would like to see, like, continued collaboration.
Absolutely.
Assuming the zoning board, assuming that this board puts that as a condition and the zoning board approves it with that condition and with the design review, I can work with the design review in with Housing and Community Development Department that's doing that pilot study.
Okay.
And with the goal of reducing the impacts of the heat island effect, that's what we're concerned about.
That's fine.
And, John, what was the department's recommendation on this one?
Department of recommendation is for approval in today's package of a list of...
With the conditions.
Potential conditions. I would add to those conditions, the condition that you've talked about, about working with the Cool Neighborhood Pilot Study. And I noticed that the fire department is asking that there only be one address, one street address. I'm assuming, since it's labeled as Maverick, that that would be the street as opposed to east side.
That's fine.
And then the other conditions are community improvement trust fund payment and the standing conditions as applicable.
Yes, thank you, John.
Anybody else? No?
Make the motion to approve it with the conditions we just talked about.
I'll second that.
Okay, this is to make a recommendation with ZBA, either for or again. So did I hear a motion?
Sarah made a motion to recommend approval with the conditions that I listed. And then Eric.
Sorry, Sarah. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to read the conditions?
Standing conditions as applicable, community improvement trust fund payment, a design review, one address being the Maverick Street address, and work with the Cool Neighborhood Pilot Study.
Yes, thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Next is case 22-28 at 320 Revere Beach Parkway. GVLP Corp. is the petitioner.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Anthony Rossi here on behalf of the petitioner. I also have Rick Salvo from Engineering Alliance and Bob Bishop, I think, yep, he's here. He's our traffic analysis, who's here. And I also have the representatives of the corporation that are present in the audience. If I may, yeah, John, could you have that? So I did not represent them priorly. I believe this board did see a previous application of this and it was approved, subject to conditions. I can talk a little bit about the project, but I can talk also about the major differences in the prior one that was presented. But basically, they shrunk the size of the building considerably. And they're not using the second floor of the structure. By doing so, they increased the amount of parking on the site. So currently, there's going to be 16 parking spaces, which is de minimis, I think, of relief that we're seeking for a special permit, I believe, is one parking space rather than the multiple that we needed before. Also, green space and open space has increased as a result of taking a portion of the building down. So we actually increased the green space and open space on the building, on the structure. John, do you have the elevation? Yes, sorry, thank you. That, that one would be great.
Sorry.
The one after it, I'm sorry. Yeah, this one would be great. That works. So now you can see that the structure, if I may approach, it's probably better so I can show you what changed. So originally, the structure went past here to here. And what they did now is they actually increased the amount of parking. Only one parking space is short for the special permit. They actually had a handicap here and they increased all the green space going all the way around here, more shrubs. And the building is a smaller building that was originally presented before the board. Everything else essentially was the same as far as the actual structure itself. There is, and Rick can talk a little bit about the civil engineering, the fire, stormwater. But I believe around the perimeter of the whole entire parking lot, there's a stone, correct, Rick? A stone infiltration system that is going to be going through that to take off any groundwater that's coming from the property that's going around the perimeter of the whole entire parking lot. I can talk a little bit about the use and so forth. This is proposed to be a marijuana dispensary. The zoning allows the dispensary at this location via special permit through the city, which we've started the process through the ZBA. The zoning relief for dimensional regs, the only thing I think we're short of is, I believe you needed 19 spaces and we have, I'm sorry, 16 spaces on it. So it's far de minimis than what it was originally. I believe originally it was well over 20 or 30 spots. But because of the shrinkage of the size of the structure and what they're going to do now, it accommodated that shrinkage of parking. And I can talk about the traffic analysis if you want, I can have Bob talk about it. But we did a full traffic study. You should have a pretty thick booklet that's in front of you that talked about it. I didn't know how extent you really wanted me to go through that again. But the traffic analysis was pretty good for this type of use, especially with the shrinkage of the building. I can talk a little bit about also the representatives of who's running this operation. We have, you know, Madeline Garcia, we have Ms. Panerozi, we have many leads that are actually present in the back on it. But these are people that are renowned, are familiar with this. Ms. Panerozi and Gladys also run other sites in Somerville that they already started. But I didn't know how extent you really want me to put this presentation. But I really wanted to talk more about the site itself as far as, since this is planning board for site plan approval, to talk about the major changes that were done. They didn't go, they didn't go to the wrong direction. They actually went to the positive direction by adding more green space and more parking and what have you on it. And the structure is existing on the building. So they're not building a new structure. They're going to make it more aesthetically pleasing on the outside. They will have security and lighting while operation is in place. It's more of taking a portion of the building down to accommodate the additional parking and open space that we're proposing. But I will have Bob talk a little bit about the traffic, just do we have it on the record, do you have it? And if you have any questions, certainly can ask him more about the traffic on that end.
I'll take care of it. Thank you, Chair and Board members. For the record, Robert Micho, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. We're based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. So we've been involved with the site for some time. And we have prepared a traffic study that evaluated the impact of this project and this use, not only at the site itself and the driveways and the parking needs it might have, but also at the key gateways shown in red dots that surround the site. We've gone out and inventoried traffic volume conditions at each one of those locations and have quantified that in the study to understand, you know, not only how much traffic the site would generate, but how much of an impact that might have on the area. The long and short of it is that the site is proximate to the signal at Revere Beach Parkway, which carries more than 4,000 vehicles per hour. It's a very heavily traveled intersection. It's also a high crash location that's eligible for state-level funding for safety improvements. The prior use, the retail use of the facility, was estimated to generate somewhere between 20 and 30 customer trips per hour during its opening hours, including mornings and Saturdays. The proposed use, based on the applicant's experience and empirical information, number of sales positions, et cetera, is expected to generate a customer demand of about 50 per hour, 50 customers per hour. We anticipate, based on the characteristics of this area and the census tract information, that some portion of that customer base will actually use public transportation, they'll walk, they'll bike, they'll use something other than an automobile. However, for analysis purposes in what we've produced, we're expect, we've projected that everyone will arrive in a car. It's a very conservative assumption. On that basis, the 50 customers per hour, if they do arrive strictly by automobile, represent a very, very small fraction or percentage of the traffic activity in that area already. And in fact, only marginally higher than the current and historic use of the property. So we don't expect that on a traffic impact basis that this is going to present a material impact to traffic flow, operations, queuing, or other aspects. We spent a lot of time looking at parking. We think that's the more critical issue here. And today's condition, the site only has several parking spaces on the property to support the retail use. And is very reliant, quite frankly, on the curbside parking along Adams Street. It wouldn't be uncommon to see half a dozen cars parked along Adams Street associated with that existing use. The proposed use is expected to generate an average customer parking demand of about three to four parking spaces and a peak demand of as many as 11. You know, assuming that all sales positions are in full use, all employees are on site. And we're talking about something that's weekday evening period or Saturday midday period, 11 maximum. Which fits nicely with the revised site plan, which has 11 parking spaces in a main parking field. So the conclusion we have is that the highest generating use that could occur here will be accommodated in the main parking field. It will also be augmented, if necessary, by the four additional parking spaces that are located to the page left here. We don't expect that they'll be needed. We don't expect that they'll be used, if at all, at least not frequently. And could in fact provide a basis for, you know, the manager, some of the employees to park near the site. In addition to that, of course, we have continued public accessibility to the Adams Street parking, which, again, we don't expect to rely on, certainly not to the extent the existing use does. I will point out that the plan actually formalizes the driveway about 65 feet from Revere Beach Parkway. It actually introduces new curb. It modifies the sidewalks entirely around the property so that they're much more walkable than they are today. It introduces a bike rack with an easy connection to the Revere Beach Parkway sidewalk on one side. So it has many elements that are vastly superior to what currently exists on the site. So it has adequate parking based on highest potential use scenario for the property. It does not present a material impact from traffic perspective. And the applicant envisions that some portion of its business will most likely be online, pre-order, so that that expedites the transaction once the customer actually does arrive to the site. And numerous sites that we've permitted for this use, the average transaction times are around six to eight minutes for a typical transaction. And that would anticipate that about half the transactions are in store versus half online or pre-order. The pre-order, which is usually done by a frequent customer, if you will, who's familiar with the facility, familiar with the product, they know what they're looking for, that transaction time when they arrive to the site is typically less than five minutes. The product's already ordered, it's paid for, they show up to the site, they show ID, you know, they receive the product and they leave. So it's a fairly efficient operation, which speaks to why the parking demands for use like this are not higher than what we're suggesting. You know, the 11 parking spaces, in our opinion, in our experience, are more than enough to support the use. So that's the key. You know, I can go into any details that the board might find or have questions about. Thank you.
I can have the civil engineer talk, but there really isn't that much for civil engineering other than the stormwater we talked about, the existing structure, and also the landscaping that's on site. And I can talk a little bit about snow removal, that any snow that's on site that takes away from parking will be removed immediately. So as far as snow storage is concerned, it will never alleviate or cause any of the existing parking to be blocked. And that could be a condition, it's a pretty normal condition in any type of approvals. But I do want to talk about the snow removal. And I do have to correct because they yelled at me because I said Madeline Garcia, it's Gladys Vega. I apologize. So I don't get yelled at in the back. So just to correct that information. But I'll gladly answer any questions that the board may have. And I do have them available if there's any questions to that effect. But I just wanted to get that in front of you and go that direction.
Yeah, just a quick question. Will employees occupy any of those parking spots?
So the goal here, and we talked about this actually in the zoning board. So they're going to try to have three, if you look here, there's four spots here tandem. Can you see those?
Yeah.
So essentially, they try to focus on having the employees, if they do park, to be parked there. One of the goals, if you look at the package, is that they hire Chelsea residents on it. So they were hoping to do carpooling, you know, give them vouchers and so forth to come together. That way, it limits and we have more accessible parking. And then we also have parking inside the building. So we expect that one spot to be occupied by an employee also. So those are the spots we were looking for to be employee parking on site, especially if you may have up to eight people on a given day. So at least five of them could be accessible to them. But we expect to be Chelsea residents. And the whole packet talks a little bit about the agreement they did with the city regarding the discounts they give Chelsea residents and the percentage that goes to Chelsea residents and the employee rates for the Chelsea residents.
Can you explain the relationship between a butter on the, I assume that's a different owner, the building in the bottom left?
I'm sorry, this one right here?
Yeah.
I believe this is a two-family structure. We don't own that property.
Okay, but the parking spots, but...
So I can talk, yeah, that's where it gets a little confusing. So when the owner of the property, who's not the owner, who's not my client, okay? He's, this is a lease to these people. When he purchases property, his property came with an easement for those four parking spaces that ran with this property. So these four parking spaces are an easement in perpetuity. So only this building can use these parking spaces that went to this property.
Okay, are you referring to the hatched area?
Yes. See this checkered mark?
Yeah.
That checkered box?
Those are four.
Those are four, tandem.
So the lines to the left belong to the...
Correct. Yeah, everything else belongs to them. So that was already, when they purchased the building, the owner, it came with those, there was four parking spaces. There was already an easement in place. I should have brought that up. It was brought up by the ZBA.
And they'll be entering, anyone driving into the building will be entering from Adams?
Correct.
And backing out?
Correct. That's why we sort of thought if we were going to have employee parking, if they didn't carpool, what have you, those would be the easiest spaces to put them in because they're the ones to be blocking each other in or out, what have you. Any other questions? And we'll do a white roof if you need one. We'll do a white roof if you want a white roof. You can do one. I already asked them that.
The, as you know, each case has to stand on its own.
Correct.
We have not heard from the police department on the security plan on this plan. And we have on previous, but not on this one. Each case has to stand on its own. So if you'll please have whoever's doing the reviews send me an email saying that they concur with the security plan.
Okay, that's fine. I'll have that filed for you, John.
You won't need it for tonight, but you'll need it for the ZBA maybe.
The ZBA, that's fine. And I can talk, there will be, just to do it for the record, there will be security on location, on site at all times.
So your parking and traffic analysis is based on, you're assuming that the amount of sales and traffic that will be generated is based on the number of employees?
No, I only talked about how many employees would actually we expect to be on that site on a full shift. Then they rotate, you know, then you have another shift coming in.
Right.
So it had nothing to do with the amount of sales. I was trying to put the highest number that is projected.
The highest number of employees working at a given time?
On a given time, they expected it would be around eight employees to be in there at one time.
Okay. It just seems like a little bit of a backwards way to do the calculation, like...
The traffic study has nothing to do with the employees. So the traffic study has to do with trip counts. So the traffic study has to do with trip counts. So the amount of people that are coming in and out of the place, and that's it. I only was answering the question.
How are you guys estimating how many people, how many trips you expect are going to happen?
Bob, can you talk about that?
Thank you. It has mainly to do with sales positions and the turnover that each sales position can achieve.
Sales positions?
Correct, right.
What do you mean by sales positions?
Cash registers.
Right, so that's what I was saying, employees.
Yeah, assuming that each sales position is, has an employee at it, the combination of online ordering and in-store ordering would relate to a customer demand on an hourly basis during the highest hour of 50 customers per hour. That's assuming that an in-store transaction, that each sales position could achieve three customers over the course of an hour, right? It's a typical 20-minute, 15 to 20-minute transaction, if you will, right, on average. The online ordering would be typically a five-minute transaction. So when you average that out and assume that roughly half of these transactions are online pre-order, the average transaction time that you can expect among all customers at the facility is between six and eight minutes.
I think it's just the direction of causality that's kind of confusing me, because you're saying like, we expect this many customers to appear depending on how many people we have working the cash registers, but like, I think that, you know, the amount of customers that we see at Market Basket doesn't really have to do with how many lanes are open. It's kind of, the reverse causes it, do you know what I'm saying? So I'm just, I just don't really understand where the basis of these numbers are.
Right.
It just seems a bit arbitrary.
What might make it easier to understand is, first of all, this facility will not be open during the morning commuter hours.
Okay.
Right, unlike the current use, or other uses that could go there, right? So...
What are the hours of the store, the planned hours right now?
Attorney might be able to answer that specifically.
The hours of operation, I'm sorry, 10 to 9:00, 10 to 9:00 PM.
Is that on the weekends as well?
Weekends.
In the microphone?
So it's by appointment only, that's how they're starting off with for the first, I think, for six months. It's by appointment only.
For six months, it's by appointment only?
Correct.
Okay.
Then it goes back to, I think, the licensing board, and they reevaluate to go if it's working and what have you. That controls the license for the dispensary. And I would note, if you, I don't know if this board had the inclination to go by the other dispensaries in the city, and if you go by there, you can actually see the amount of people that actually work there, and it's pretty much like an industry standard with all these locations, you know, how many people, how many trips they're going to have. They've seen it, and it's actually probably going to be more diluted as more get approved down the road. So that's why when you do a traffic analysis, you try to do it on the worst-case scenario rather than the best-case scenario, because if it works on the worst-case scenario, it's going to work regularly throughout that. But again, there'll be, the telling tale will be the first six months regarding if it's going to be three, four tellers, six, seven, because they'll know the amount of people that are coming in. But one thing I've noticed, and I'm familiar with other dispensaries and so forth through representation, is that the amount of people going to these dispensaries have shrunk and diminished considerably in the last year or two as other dispensaries have opened up. And you can look at, the city has privy to these sales because they have to pay the percentages to the cities and states, and they've all diminished accordingly. So the amount of trips are not increasing, but we still calculate it as if it was at this level rather than at this level, because that's how you're supposed to do it. So you, just like when they do stormwater, you do the 100-year storm, you know, you don't do five Coltech systems on a four-family house on each side because you build to that, you prepare for that.
So are, I'm sorry, did you say that you did your calculation based on the period of time when it's appointment only?
No, when you do, when you do calculations, they do it based on, you know, trip counts, the amount of people they expect to come in, industry standard and so forth. We did it based on the amount of tellers at a maximum that can be there, and if it was the worst-case scenario, this is what we expect for the amount of trip counts based on that many minutes per person in that scenario. And then we'll know better in six months if it's working, that you may need three tellers, four tellers, or what have you, but it's always the worst-case scenario that it's presented to, and that's something in the norm. But I can attest, and I don't know if John can speak to it a bit, these are all public records, and you can look at the sales in Chelsea for all the locations, they've all been going down because more locations are being put up. And it's not just in Chelsea, it's all the surrounding communities, because now they're all coming into play. So, but you always want to prepare for the worst case because that's how you prepare. It's worse if I come to you and say, we're going to have two tellers here, and we're going to have, you know, five trips, when that's not the case, and it could be higher. So that's why it's presented that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to summarize, for the first six months, it's going to be by appointment only, and after that six-month period, you're going to revisit the traffic analysis?
I believe the way it works through the city, I believe through licensing, through the, when you go to a marijuana license dispensary, you're always on that for the first six months, and then you go back in front of the board, the licensing board, and the licensing board will direct moving forward.
Okay.
They might see a non-traffic issue, they might see everything's working good, they might say, you know what, we want to continue in this path. But they have the jurisdiction to see that because they constantly monitor that license, if that makes more sense.
Okay, that makes me feel comfortable that they're going to be...
Yeah, that's just the procedure in the city.
...visiting us after we have some more real numbers...
Yep.
...to work with.
Do you guys have a, like a separate area for drop-offs?
Yes, so it goes inside the building. So you really, I don't know if you can tell here, there's a loading...
Oh, okay.
Well, so it comes inside the building, it's locked, and when that happens, security will be there on-site.
So is it like a garage that opens up?
Exactly.
So what is the plan for snow, I guess when it snows?
So snow removal, as snow comes in, we can put it here, this is all green space, you know, in the wintertime it won't be green essentially, but if this piles up and it blocks any of this, one of the conditions, and they do it in the ZBA and it can be part of this board, it has to be removed. We're going to have a Bobcat on-site, and we'll remove it, and we'll take it from location. I can tell you that one of, Ms. Panerosi's brother, who's also the contractor, he's a big contractor, and they have trucks and so forth, and they own multiple real estate projects, and they, that's what they do on all their parking lots, and they will be removed off-site. And that certainly can be a condition, but it'd be, it's pretty normal that you'd have a condition that parking cannot be altered or obstructed with any type of snow, it'd have to be removed.
Will the Bobcat be occupying a parking space?
No, it only, it only would come when we have...
Oh, okay.
...a big snowstorm, so we'd be prepared and to get it off there.
Should it, it was on-site.
No, no. What I mean is, it'll be on-site during, you know, usually the meteorologists are pretty good, so when we know it's coming, we'll have that on-site to make sure. It's a constant process being removed.
Yeah. There's no signage in the green areas right now, right?
No, the signage is strictly on the building. I'm not sure if you have a view on electronically by...
Scroll to the end.
If it is?
Yeah, if you scroll to the end.
John, can you scroll to the ends so we can see? That's it. Peter Verdi. That's the only signage, we'll see.
Okay. So it's, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, is it going to just be one floor?
One floor. That's just the second floor they're not occupying, they don't own the building.
Oh.
It's just the signage would be on the second floor of this building.
I guess who, like what is on the second floor of the building?
I believe, if I wasn't mistaken, at one time it was being operated by a church or something.
I actually received a call a week or so ago from a woman who I believe is here, who says that there was a church there. You did tell the zoning board at last meeting, there was no church there, but there was a, there is a church there, and they've been there for two years.
Yeah, I know there was a church there. Is it, they're saying they're still occupying the church there?
I think it's up to the chairman.
If there is a church there, there's got to be an at-will tenant. We don't own the building, but our agreement with the owner of the building, that would have to be vacated part of the use.
Is there a public porch?
Yes, there's a cycling lane.
Might as well do it there.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carla Sevedo. I'm here with my pastor, Rebecca Tejera. We're from New Beginning CCF Chelsea. We are a Christian Pentecostal church, and we have been in the building for the past two years. And we had talked to the landlord about, was there anything happening with the building? He told us no, and so we learned about this. And so we're here for two reasons. One, because we wanted to make sure that the board knew that there is currently a church there. We're a congregation of about 80 people. And then second, we're just concerned that because we don't currently have a lease, because the new landlord wouldn't give us another lease, that we don't have any rights. And so if this happens, we'll have to rush out and, you know, find another place with no advance notice, because we don't have any protection, because we don't have the lease. And so we just wanted to make sure that the board knew that there is a church there. And we use the space anywhere from three to five times a week.
And so the landlord refused to renew your lease, is that what happened?
Correct, yes.
Did he tell you why that time?
He just told us that, not to worry about it. I actually, I spoke to him maybe about two months ago about the lease again. He's like, don't worry if anything happens, we will let you know with advance notice, and then we find out about this. So that's when I called John, I was like, hey, John, so that you know there is a church there.
This went in front of like zoning and planning in January or before, right?
Yeah, well, we just found out about, about maybe two, three weeks before I had called John about this, and we're like, oh, wait, we didn't know this was happening, because we had heard that some things were happening to the building, but again, the landlord told us nothing was happening, there was nothing to worry about, and he wouldn't give us another lease. And so we're just concerned, I mean, if it's going to happen, then great, but we just want, as a church, like some advance notice, because again, we don't have any protection.
The matter of a lease between the church and the building owner is a legal matter between the church and the business owner. It is not a matter of the planning board or the zoning board for that, for any...
Thank you.
Neither board, neither planning board or zoning board can interfere with legal rights that either party has.
Will there be, will the second floor be occupied, or are you removing the second floor so it's less usable square footage?
Well, I can tell you this much, we're not occupying the second floor, but part of the agreement that my client, when he occupies the space, the second floor will be delivered vacant, because any type of use that's required there would have to go through the city to go through zoning relief. So that's one of the conditions that would be a pertinent part of that with the landlord. As far as, we don't own the building, so we're only occupying the first floor of the building, we're not occupying the second floor of the building. I believe previously, on a previous application that went before this board, they were going to occupy the second floor. They're no longer occupying the second floor. They're only occupying the first floor. But we do not own the building, but I believe that if they did take possession of the premises, that they would have to either, whether it's a church or what have you, anybody else, they would have to go in front of the board to seek authorization to be there, if I'm not mistaken, correct, John?
Correct.
And that's been represented in the actual denial letter and also in the decision. And that, and that's something they would, any tenants with the landlord, and the landlord is aware of it, that would be restricted to him for any other use for that to happen. But nothing to do with us, and nothing that's coming before us before the law, because we don't control that.
I have a question for John. When we had, we saw the application for the marijuana dispensary on Broadway, it was also a lease situation, and basically, we did not approve it because the landlord was unreliable and not in compliance and, you know, wasn't a very good landlord. And just, I mean, I think it's a little bit concerning that the landlord has known about this process all along and has refused to notify his tenants about, like, so that they could plan for it, and that, I definitely, I think, raises questions about his relationship to the proposed business.
While it may not be the best landlord-tenant relationship, it is still their relationship. It is not the planning board's relationship.
But what about when it happened with Broadway?
Broadway was a little different. It was a landlord that was not in compliance with the zoning, nor with the building code or with the city's code.
Okay, 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 got it.
Thank you.
I'm slightly changing the topic here. Is there going to be security outside to ensure underageers can stroll in?
Yes, yes. It's going to be required anyways to have it outside, and it's going to be well-lit. In fact, on the previous meeting, we actually, on the ZBA, we had, one of the abutters was concerned, because I guess in the area, there's a lot of drug or traffic use in that area, and with all this building now to be a well-lit area, and there's always people parking on the sidewalks, they said this will alleviate a lot of that, especially with security there. It's very difficult for someone when you have video cameras and surveillance cameras and security outside with well-lit areas to see, you know, prevalent drug use that's existing now will probably dissipate with the high level of security and lighting and what have you. But there will be security on-site exterior.
Do you have letters of support of the project from some of the abutters?
We have, we filed with the ZBA, we had, you know, I don't want to say, but I want to say with 25, 30 letters of support. We also had over 30, 40 people in the room. Since this was just really planning board, site plan approval, we were just dealing with the site plan approval regarding the changes and what have you since the previous approval. So that's all we were presenting before today. When we go to the ZBA vote in the next hearing, we will have all those people again present the fact that the last hearing, they really didn't even want all those people there. John can attest to, they said just, you know, just state your name and try not to bring it too lengthy, because there's so many people there.
The chairman gave them five minutes to speak, and then once they went through it, the chairman would have given another option for them to speak, but it was more of a way of allowing everybody who wanted to speak a chance to speak.
Correct. So that's how many people were there, and we expect that many people to come. At the ZBA, I just didn't want to, you know, this is site plan approval, so it's more talking about the conditions in the property, you know, snow removal, landscaping, what have you, and traffic. So I wanted to focus on the issues at hand.
One is a site plan approval, I guess you can see on the agenda, and the other is a recommendation to the ZBA.
I have recommended conditions.
The board, and with conditions.
For the recommendation, standing conditions as applicable, I don't want one consistent set of plans, because right now the plans are not consistent among themselves. A signage plan, this is not a full signage plan on size, materials, colors, how it's going to be lit. Because you're basing your parking on the first-floor use, second floor should not be occupied without seeking approval of the ZBA. And then a parking management plan. Your traffic study says parking management plan, but it doesn't, it said one will be available, but it doesn't give it, so parking management plan. For the site plan, standing conditions as applicable, and a snow maintenance plan, a snow removal plan, and then a maintenance plan for the proposed two-foot-wide stone drip edge around the parking lot.
Yes, thank you.
That's for the recommendation.
Yes.
Right. All right, we need a motion to approve or recommend or not for the ZBA.
I'm trying to put the plan and to file a motion to approve the site plan and recommend to the ZBA based on the conditions that John just mentioned.
Second? I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Give me a yes.
Thank you, thank you, John. Thank you, members of the board, thank you, commission. Thank you, members of the board, thank you, commission.
Good job. Is it the same church that we're showing it at? Place where it goes to street?
No, it wasn't different, not the same church.
That is easy.
Seventy Fremont.
Right, next on the agenda is case twenty-two dash twenty-five at Seventy Fremont Avenue. Adam Vanvoe. Do you describe your application, Adam?
Good evening, everybody. This is to utilize an area under my deck attached to my home and porch for a open area parking area, under, under the proposed deck and porch. For off-street parking purposes.
Is this what you're, is this the sheet you're looking for? Or is there another, is this the sheet you're looking for, or is there another one?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well.
Is this the, is this what you're looking for?
Yes, yes. So that shows the deck and the, and the proposed area. You see where it has highlighted on the plot plan would be a proposed curb cut would be there. And then utilization from there into six feet into the property from the sidewalk, it'll be about twenty-two feet in where the car would propose to be going. On two sides of the property is a two-and-a-half-foot stone wall by twelve feet high, which is the foundation of the, I'm sorry. Would you like me to?
Point to us, point on the drawings so we can follow.
Okay. So here is a deck and, I guess this doesn't really show very well, but there is a four-season porch attached to the house. Under this is about fifteen feet, because I'm on a hill. And so this part of the, is a boulder and cement-stone foundation, two-and-a-half feet thick by fifteen feet high. And then, so this part would be open. This is obviously where you would utilize parking the car coming in from the street. And so the area is something about, like I said, about twenty-two feet in from the sidewalk where the actual coverage of where the said vehicle would be underneath the porch and the deck. That's the proposed project.
So you'll be pulling in from Franklin Street?
That's correct. There's no parking allowed on this side of the street, only on the opposite side. So as far as that's concerned, that's a, a good issue there.
So what's on the right side of the?
Here?
Yeah, what's that?
Here is a, because we're on a hill, there's a found, retaining wall, which goes around to my neighbor here at sixty-three Harvard. And this is a stone patio and here's a deck.
Um, are there any structural or architect drawings for this project?
Everything has been submitted to the city, I guess about a little over a couple of months ago, in a proposed package.
This is the package that the board received.
That's correct. So that's a side view of, this would be Franklin and this, because you're on a hill, you ramp up. This is about six feet. And then this would be the entryway below the deck and the porch. It's about fifteen feet when it's properly dug out, it'll be, and open on two-and-a-half sides.
Sorry, I can't, I can't, I can't turn the page.
Okay, that's all right. I, I mean, I did look at that drawing, it looked awfully precarious. Not only maneuvering your car to get into the spot, but if you were to take out one of those columns, you know, you're gonna have to.
Well, the proposal is for cement coming up from the concrete, which is going to be poured and drained into the property, not onto the street side. So there won't be any issues as far as drainage is that concerned. And you're gonna have a concrete retaining wall on either side here when, when you pull in. I know this is kind of exaggerated, but the street is on a angle. And my next-door neighbors at sixty-three Harvard were able to achieve the exact same curb cut on the same pitch. So we see it as feasible on, on that, as far as that's concerned. But since you are extremely wide and the car's only, you know, car isn't like, you know, twenty-two feet long, you know, you, you have no problem pulling in. You have like probably four feet on each side of the car pulling in. So there shouldn't be any issue as far as backing in or pulling in or anything like that. Like I said, it's gonna be reinforced concrete on either side. So if somebody made a serious error, they would obviously run into concrete before they do any damage to the house or anything.
Okay, but you have some safety precautions designed if that were to happen?
I'm sorry?
I would hope that you have some safety measures designed into the construction of those columns in the event that that were to.
Sure, if the city's, I'm certainly open to what the city has to say or recommend. I'm certainly open to that. If maybe something that the contractor, architect has overlooked, we're certainly more than happy to see what conditions would be applicable that you would be happy with.
And just to clarify, those columns are holding up your porch?
Porch and deck.
Which already exists?
Already exists.
Okay, so you're trying to just lase in underneath an existing structure?
That's correct.
And so the request is for a curb cut and the, the, the non-compliance is that it's within five feet of, with the rear property line, is that, is that right?
Yeah, so I wanna make, just make sure, I wasn't quite sure on that. This is six feet in from the sidewalk before the actual parking area would begin.
And then you have windows, right, in the, in the building?
Right, above that.
That are adjacent to the parking area?
That's correct. Above that is fifteen, fifteen feet above the foundation where the, the first-floor windows on the porch are.
What interaction have you had with the fire department?
Fire department, I understand, came and talked to, I guess, somebody or people on the board, and they were concerned about fire, fire prevention. I guess they talked about they wanted an exterior sprinkler system. I'm a little perplexed as about how that would work. But the contractor told me that they were going to be doing fire retardant and cement board or whatever the city wanted on the ceiling part. Whatever is applicable that the city is happy with would approve. Uh, it's gonna be insulated, spray-foam insulated, and then either blueboard or cement board on that ceiling part. And there's gonna be a light as well, probably motion activated upon entrance or egress of the parking area.
So are you saying that you're currently working with them?
With the fire department?
Yes.
No, this was a recommendation I got from what the fire department saw.
Oh, okay.
So I was just addressing their concerns with the contractor and the engineering to see how that would be addressed in a normal parking area, like a house would have in a garage. What would be the standard procedure to do that? And so obviously, you want fire, you know, prevention or retardant of some type.
Can we go back to the most enlarged site, plan that shows that part of the site? Where we can look at the dimensions more closely? That's your rear abutter?
Yes, that's correct, that's my, my neighbor. So that gives you a reference of where the next corner would be versus the beginning of my property? I know there was an issue as far as parking within so many feet of a intersection.
So are those two proposed parking spots on the left side of the screen?
I would be the left side, I would be probably here.
Oh, is that the?
That's the neighbor on the corner?
Oh, okay.
And they've been informed of your plans?
Absolutely, yes.
So the plan is to use your deck as like a carport?
A carport, right, would be open carport on like two and a quarter sides.
And then, I guess for, I guess, how, like, what's the distance from basically the house to the sidewalk?
Uh, it's about twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet. Can we, John, can we look at a plan, maybe the one that we had up earlier? Something that shows that lot line in relation to? Is this as good a plan as we have to talk about dimensions? Is there, okay?
Yes.
Something else?
I know there's probably a better drawing that was submitted with your packages.
Okay, so you're.
It just probably didn't come out well in this representation.
So you, you're proposing that location specifically?
That's correct, the location is accurate.
Okay, because there's an existing structure and you're trying to put a parking spot underneath it?
That's correct.
And are there other parking spots on the right side of your building? When, I, I just can't read that text. What do those rectangles represent?
Are you talking about here?
Yes, yes.
So this, I guess, I apologize for this rendering isn't very well, but I guess this is supposed to be representing existing patio on my property. This is the property line.
Yeah.
And here is an old wooden deck. Uh, when I purchased the house back in twenty-twelve, that was all there. And so what I wanted to do as far as that, which is separate from that, is I wanted to remove all that and increase, increase the green area.
That's good.
Because I just, I don't have enough green area in my property and I wanna increase that.
I see.
I already bought three trees already to plant them, I'm just waiting to.
I'm just glad they know it's not paved, because we don't like to see.
No, well, the last thing I wanna do is pave my, what little yard, backyard I have. I'd rather utilize that.
There's no meters underneath the porch against your house, right? The gas meters are?
No, there is not. I had the, I guess, I can't think of the name of it when they come out, DigSafe. And there's nothing in that area that needs to be disturbed. Utilities are to the left of the proposed area.
Speaking of trees, you mentioned trees. There is a tree blocking what would be the curb cut. That tree has already been moved or replaced twice. If it's going to be, it will have to be either moved or replaced. My guess is replaced because you can't move a tree too many times. That will be at your expense.
Well, that's my understanding. I, I question if it was moved, this would be the third time it was moved. Uh, I'm not sure if that's accurate, but it would definitely have to be moved. I'm, I'm certainly willing to take the tree and put it maybe here on my property or something. If it would survive, I don't know.
It's a street, it's a street tree, they will want to replace the street tree. And relative to the fire department, you should really talk to the fire department and tell them what your contractor and get their sign off on it. Because even if the boards do approve this, fire department has to sign off on the permit and they can refuse to do it if they, if they think it's a fire safety hazard.
Right, I just wanna talk to them further about why they feel that an outdoor sprinkler system is, is a, not a requirement, but I think they call it a serious request.
The, in general, the boards will defer to the department's requests.
Absolutely.
So it'll be whoever to talk to them. I would assume you would have done this before this meeting, but you definitely should do it before the zoning board meeting.
Sure.
Well, I would like to make a motion to approve with the conditions we discussed.
Conditions would be, standard conditions as applicable. If the street tree is to be removed, replaced or replanted is to be done at the expense of the petitioner.
And if possible, to add like parking bollards, like, right before your house, just in case?
I'm sorry, what did you mean?
Uh, like basically poles, I guess, to make sure that like, if you pull in too, too close to your house, like, you're not actually hitting the house.
Like a cement pole that they would plant in? I can certainly talk to them about that, I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, and I have some concerns about the fact that you're driving close to the columns that are keeping your porch up, because accidental contact could break it. And that's a safety issue. So I'm curious if that's something that the fire department would, um, look into or examine as part of their processes?
Sure, absolutely.
It's, and that itself isn't a planning board matter, other than how the fire department would interface with it. But it's a concern for your own good.
Safety, absolutely.
What is the clearance between the two columns? Like, for the width of the spot where you're gonna park a car? What is the clearance?
The clearance?
The clear dimension between the two columns?
I believe the deck is either side of, of course, I apologize again for this. I wanna say it's either side of twenty, twenty feet. I'm not exactly sure on the exact measure.
I mean, it looks, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like fifteen feet.
That could be.
Written upside down.
I apologize, I can't really.
Which is fine, I mean, that's a decent dimension that you could fit a car. I don't know as if you're planning to fit in two side by side, that would be tricky.
One is all I'm looking for.
That should be.
I did take a walk up there a couple of weeks ago. This is eyeball. Looked feasible to me. What I liked about your proposal is that you've protected the architecture of the building rather, and your yard. Rather than have a car parked in your front yard. And rather than have some kind of a garage or a carport tacked on, this seemed like a, a good solution.
Thank you.
Provide you with parking and, as I say, protect the architecture there. I did, I was a little nervous about the fire hazard. And, and I know about concrete board and I know about all that. If it was my house, I'd think twice about that.
Might be better up with an electric vehicle, it might be less risky.
Yeah, for fire, you mean?
Yeah, because it's less likely to ignite.
Well, that's not what I understand, but electric car fires are a big, big issue.
Okay, maybe the codes are the same.
Anyway, I just, an observation.
And I also like that you're not eliminating any parking by creating a curb cut. So I have no objections to what you're trying to do from a planning standpoint. I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions that we just discussed.
That includes the tree, yes.
The tree and what were the other, John, can you just?
Standard conditions as applicable and Alan suggested the parking bollards to prevent the car from hitting the house.
And I will second that.
Second, sir? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, everybody.
See you on December thirteenth. Here.
Uh, next is case twenty-two dash twenty-six at Seventy Prescott Avenue. Erin Griffin is the petitioner.
Hello.
Are you her?
I'm her, yes.
So to speak.
I think the best picture, John, is the one, the actual picture of the front of the house.
Since this was just delivered today, I did not have time to download it.
Sure. Do you have the images? Thank you. So definitely some changes since last time. I took the suggestion and I got a, an engineer to come out, as well as the contractor who would be doing the work. Explained to them what I had initially proposed about wanting to lower the front entirely. And they made some suggestions and I, you know, some compromises, I guess you can call it. The, we would still intend to lower the driveway because of how steep it is and just it's really unreasonable to get up in the winter. And we would be, excuse me, based on the, the new drawing, these stairs would have to come down lower so that we would actually be able to get up once it is, is lowered down. And then this would be extended over to allow another car. But the remaining part of the front lawn. But the remaining part of the front lawn, um, wouldn't be lowered down entirely. They would have the height of the wall, I believe, at six feet, which allows them to, to level out, uh, the existing front yard now, which would be a, a good compromise, at least for us. And then maybe some reasonable landscaping, so we don't have to try and get the lawnmower out there as much.
Could you, uh, compare this to that picture and tell us where we are?
Sure.
As we look at the plan?
Sure. So this part right here, uh, on the plan, you'd see this is the stairs. These are the stairs that would come down, um, to come up here and meet where you'd actually go up into the backyard or to the front door. This is the, where the wall cuts off. So this part right here, um, is where the wall cuts off currently and that, as far back as it's going, wouldn't change, it would stay the same. Um, we would just be extending the wall over and then bringing it down so that we now had space for two spots. So that's what you see here as it goes across. And then this part would remain, it would just be more level, sorry. It would just be more level and it would just meet the other side where that existing wall and the stairs are, uh, today. Yes, perfect. So yeah, so this would, the stairs would come down. We did, um, because I, excuse me, uh, as far as taking up too much space in curb cuts, I voiced that concern. And the contractor did mention that because the stairs would have to come down, we could actually extend the curb further so that it gives space back and that would gain a spot on that side. And then, of course, we don't currently use the space, so we take up parking. Uh, so having this be an actual space that we can pull into would give back space, uh, on the street as well. But then, again, this would come over and then come down and continue over, but be a bit higher so that it could be leveled out. I also voiced concern about just proximity to the house, uh, in bringing the wall over. I went out and measured, underneath here is not foundation of the house. From what I understand from the contractor, there's two poles, concrete poles. And so it wouldn't interfere with the foundation, from what I understand. But he did say that if that was a concern, he could make sure that we, you know, make a solid plan to keep everything intact.
Yeah, I assume underneath that entrance is probably two footings, so that are probably on concrete.
Yeah, they poured it.
They poured it in.
Yeah, when they redid the stairs under here, um, you can see grass and rocks under there now, but there's two rounds solid.
Yeah, is that your retaining wall on the right side?
This? Oh, this right here?
Yeah.
Yes. That would, wouldn't be changed, that would stay as is.
So it might have to be changed if you're going to even out the driveway though, right?
I, I imagine if they lower it, they'd build the stairs to meet the wall. I don't know that they would have to, uh, remove anything from what he discussed with me. There wasn't any plan to have to, or, there wasn't a plan to impact that wall. The build would, I guess, come up to meet the wall, from what I understood. But also be concrete. And the materials would be the same as the existing stone, just a larger, uh, version for better support.
And what about the materials for the driveway itself?
That's what we were talking about earlier. Um, I did voice that concern to him as well. We didn't land on a, a final decision of what materials would be used, but I did explain to him that whatever materials get used, we have to factor in proper drainage. And I'm sorry, I didn't get your name earlier, but...
Sarah.
Sarah, uh, she made a recommendation, uh, last time and this time as well, I believe. Uh, oh, sorry, last time I believe, but this time, today, when I came in, pavers where you can allow the grass to come through, um, which I'm open to for sure.
So I would like to make a recommendation to approve, um, but if we could somewhere get it, um, in writing or shown that the curb cut would start at the driveway, as you explained.
Stand over.
Because this doesn't match what you said.
Sure.
And if you could note something about the drainage requirement. Or the, yeah, addressing drainage on your site, basically.
Okay.
Whether that's through a, uh, linear drain or some permeable surface material, rather than having that all cascade down onto the sidewalk and everything else.
Okay, so drainage for the driveway specifically? Or is it through the wall? They did put drain, uh, factor in drainage through the wall, but if it's the driveway itself, I'll make sure to...
Yeah, there, well, there's several factors. I mean, for your own safety, you don't want to be in an icy situation. That's, you know, a steep grade. But, um, if you were to increase the amount of impermeable surface, which is what you're proposing by making a wider driveway, creates a problem somewhere else. Because it's less surface area where water can soak in. So we're just asking that you take care of that and there's several different ways to do it.
Sure.
So either through the type of paving material you use or some sort of elaborate drainage system. So like, it's probably easier to just address it through paving. But you have a civil engineer on board, right? So I would think...
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
For what you're recommending, would he, we update this drawing? Or would it be a different, like...
John, who, who documents the curb cut, um, length? And is that something with a DPW?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do a drainage, you're gonna need some engineer to, to design it for you.
This one, okay, okay.
Or, or a landscape architect, or...
You have options, like if you use, much if you want to use gravel, but gravel would be better than concrete for drainage.
Okay.
And the question that she just asked was regarding the curb cut dimension. Where does that show up? Because, remind me your name?
Erin.
Erin, thank you. Because this is gonna be a pedestrian connection. The curb cut doesn't need to be that extra width, it can be limited to just the, um, twenty feet of the parking area.
And let the curb cut to the parking only. You can add that as a condition.
Yeah.
So then you wouldn't need to update this drawing? Is that right? Because it's in the condition. Okay, so not this drawing?
Yeah, every, as you know, every linear feet of potential parking space.
Yeah.
On the streets makes a big difference. So if we can minimize that so that we're not taking out yet another, um, street parking spot, that's, that would be preferable.
That's fair.
So Sarah made the motion, who seconded it?
Second, Sarah's motion.
You iterate those?
I'm sorry?
How does that drainage thing work, have worked? In other words, it seems to me what we're looking for is a drainage plan submitted to John.
Handled within the limits of the site. And is, is that, John, is that a requirement of the, um, where, where does that come into play?
You recommend it as a condition, the ZBA can adopt that as a condition.
Okay.
Is that what you have in mind?
Yeah, yeah. It's a tricky site, I've seen it. Not easy to get in and out of a parking spot, if I imagine.
Windows pop.
Questions, comments? No? Motion?
Shall I do it again?
Did you make a motion?
Twice.
Yes.
I'd like...
How about a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions we discussed and John has noted about the curb cut and the drainage.
And Alan's, Alan seconded it.
Second, Sarah's motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
I'll see you December thirteenth, here.
Next is twenty-two dash thirty at Eighteen Garland Street.
My name is Rod Rivera, I'm just speaking on behalf of Lewis Barrow owner, the owner of the property. So we here, um, seeking, we came here for November first and this time around, uh, we're just seeking for, uh, parking for two vehicles. And the city claims it was discontinued curb, but the curb is still existing. So basically what he wants to do is finish a job that another contractor started without a permit. And this is how it came about, um, us coming in front of the board. Which is this right here.
That's it, those are the only two pictures.
That would be the back part of the property.
I'll pull up your plans. Does, does this work for you?
I think the other one's probably better than the site plan.
Nope. That's the only plan that I have.
The last time we were here, you showed...
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. There we go.
Yes. So the two, um, on the Garland Street side would be actually on top of the page if it was in the right direction. But the parking would be, if you're facing the building, it'd be on the left side and it'd be two parking tandem. Cannot do anymore because the back part of the building and the property line is narrowed, so there's, there's no space to, um, add another, uh, parking space in the back. And, um, so basically the idea is to keep the grade flat at two percent and then pitch it towards the side, towards the left side, which is a retaining wall. And probably do like, uh, two feet, um, open space just so it drains towards that side instead of to the street or towards the other side of the property.
I have a question, what is a discontinued curb cut? What does that mean?
It's just a, a curb cut that at the time was not, was not needed. There was no parking space there, so they just, um, discontinued the permit for it.
So is there a curb there now?
There is a curb there now.
Looks like, uh, is it, is there a curb cut for one car to go into the driveway?
Correct. It's, um, this was ten, it's ten feet wide right now.
Oh, so that green, that grass right there?
This, this is it, right here. So that's the front of the house. That was always there and there was a small retaining wall when the first contractor took, uh, was doing the work and the building department came and told them they couldn't continue because they had to pull a permit for it. So based on that, um, this is why we're here now.
So you're looking for curb cuts on both sides?
Well, the curb, the curb cut's gonna stay where it is. We just want to finish what, with another contractor started without a permit.
Okay, so you're not proposing to change the curb cut itself from what we...
The curb cut's gonna stay, it's gonna remain the same.
Dimension will remain the same. That's, which is what...
So what happened, there was not a driveway there. There was an existing curb cut, but there was not a driveway there. An inspector walking this, uh, driving by the site saw that this work was being done without approval, zoning approval, or without approval for the curb cut, since the curb cut had been discontinued. So they were told to apply, uh, for the zoning relief that they needed.
Was the house built after the curb cut was...
I have no idea.
Believe me.
I have no idea.
I mean, if the, if it looks like that...
I'm sure it was.
But this was years ago, that that curb cut was created? Okay, so no one would park there right now because they see a driveway and they... The query is, are we taking away a street parking spot?
Well, by doing the two parking space, we're only gonna have, remove two cars from the street actually.
So you're not asking for a...
Technically, since it was a discontinued curb cut, they probably, uh, probably could have parked there. However, you'll be losing one space, gaining two off-street.
You're, okay, and this is two tandem spots is what you propose, is that right?
What was there before?
A small retaining wall.
Oh, this was just a wall?
Garage at the back of a lot, maybe?
There is a garage at the back of a lot, which is a question that came up at the ZBA and, um, the Z, but I'll leave it to the ZBA to bring that up.
And in terms of the garage, we can't, we can't really use it as, as putting vehicles in there. No small cars will actually fit through the back part of this property on the left. Um, and the owner of the property, uh, when he does his granite work, so basically all the tools goes, is stored there.
I guess, so I understand this, I guess. So you're not asking for a further curb cut on the left side or right side, right?
No, we're just asking a special permit to finish the work, um, that was started by another contractor without a permit.
Are you putting that...
So the, the work is that retaining wall that's on the right side?
No, actually, the, the work that the contractor started was, if you could see the, um, the dirt on the right side?
Yeah.
The dirt was actually the, um, as close as that point there where it is. And what they did is they started, um, taking it down to that flat level where it is now, but did not finish it because the building department stopped them.
Oh, so you're gonna fill it in with concrete, uh, cement or concrete?
No, um, asphalt. And then, like I said, we're gonna do, uh, maybe like a two feet away from this retaining wall, just so when it drains, it drains into that, um, property.
Could that spot on the right side fit a car?
Uh, no, not really.
So it's really like, what, trash bins or something like that?
Okay, that's exactly what we, what I am concerned about though, is if you're direct, if you're paving a surface that used to act like a sponge and absorb rain, if you're paving that over and directing it towards your neighbors, they could suddenly have flooding problems when they never used to, that's the...
Uh, no, because, um, so what happens is when you drain it, if you drain it, if you pitch it a quarter of an inch per foot towards that retaining wall and that stays within the property line, it's not gonna go towards the neighbor.
Okay, within your own property line?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you said that you were diverting it.
Yeah, no, 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 we just, we, we're gonna stay within the same property line.
Okay. And will the section in front of the house on the right, will that remain there as a way to turn around?
We're gonna address it to clean it up better, probably do some type of, a small retaining wall and just clean it up, flatten it a little bit, not as, not as like the driveway, but probably make it look a lot better than what it is now.
Okay, but you're not proposing to have a spot to back the car into so that you...
No, because, um, the way I seen it, uh, the contractor and I, we drove there several times and what they do is they come, they come into the property, they back into the pro, um, parking space.
I see.
So for this site, are, there aren't concerns about drainage and wanting to use permeable pavers and things, or...
I always have those concerns. You've heard our shtick on the last presentation.
I mean, we, 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 I've done other properties and what we've done is we use, uh, a special asphalt that, um, aggregate is bigger, so it's not as, it doesn't seal as much and the drain actually goes through with no problem. We, we had done it on Broadway, um, one of the properties and, and it does work.
Okay, permeable pavement, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, if that's what you're using, I have...
Well, the idea, the idea is to use, uh, regular asphalt and leaving the two feet, um, away from the, um, restrain, um, retaining wall. And this way, it'll drain right into that point.
John, would there anyone else have comments on drainage that hasn't seen this yet?
No, there have not been any other comments on drainage yet.
I didn't know if the DPW...
That gutter that's on the front porch, I guess, where's that drain to?
Right in the corner?
Yeah.
Um, it's draining right through that, um, little hill there.
That grass.
But that's what I'm saying, if, if we, when we decide to do that work, what we're gonna do is probably do a retaining wall, small retaining wall, landscaping wall, that's, it's, it's, a flooring wall would drain itself anyway. So we'll extend the gutter to the ground, and it'll drain right through the driveway. But it's not gonna be pouring a whole lot of water, 'cause it, it'll actually go through the dirt pile first before it, I don't know, it goes in the other place.
Can we add a special condition similar to the Maverick, um, condition we gave? Where we want them to, you know, work with the city to make sure that there's proper drainage, and there's no, you know, climate change flooding concerns?
Uh, you can add the one similar that you did for the last driveway, which was provide for drainage on-site. Uh, provide it, provide me with a drainage plan so that I can review it prior to signing off on a building permit.
Okay. Still want us to come here on, on December?
I think we have to vote first.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve, um, or re- recommend it to the ZBA with the conditions that we just discussed, including the, the driveway condition.
And I will second the motion to approve with all of those conditions.
You have the conditions?
I have the standing condition and a drainage plan submitted to permitting for review. Is that it?
I believe, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the opposed, none? Carol?
December thirteenth here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you think the zoning bylaws will be, we're gonna see a new draft of the zoning bylaws? Or maybe there will be a requirement for permeable surface?
We're working on it.
Okay, good. I mean, it'll make these meetings go a little quicker.
There's no requirement for permeable right at the moment, but we're working on it.
Okay.
Uh, thirteen, sorry, case twenty-two dash thirty-one at thirteen Bell Street. Joseph and Mary Ann Carroll. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you, uh, uh, tell us about your petition?
We, we live at thirteen Bell Street, and, um, we wanna put a shed in our yard. It's, I believe it's on the right side of my yard. In the, um, the reason why we're here is we're seeking a special permit because the right side of the shed doesn't meet the five-foot requirement along this property line. And, um, if we put the shed up, I, I would like it, there's gonna be like, uh, a little bit better than two feet instead of five feet. The back behind the shed, there's like six feet of clearance. And on the, um, the right side, like I said, it'll be a little bit better than two feet. The shed is, um, six, uh, eight by fourteen, and it's a hundred and twelve square feet. Behind the shed, uh, it's a parking area. My neighbors in the, and on the side where the, we need this special permit for, that's my sister's property. And it's an area that's not getting used. And the sh- the shed's gonna be installed on a patio that we don't use anymore. And it's a solid concrete base, and, um, there's no digging required or anything like that. It just, you know, they'll put it in in like two and a half hours, it'll be done. And it'll be put in by a professional company, and it'll look aesthetically, technically nice in the yard. And, um, so, if, uh, that's what we need.
Okay, can, can you point on the site plan there, you can walk around with the microphone? So your sister's property is the one, um-
This is my sister's property here.
Oh.
Can you hold up the microphone, please?
Oh, I see, I was looking at the wrong property, oh, good, okay. The yellow is your proposed shed.
Can you hold it up to your mouth when you speak?
Speak into the microphone, please.
Yeah, this is the area right here where the-
Mister Carroll, could you speak into the microphone?
This is the area right here where the, uh, the shed is gonna be. And, um, this, this is parking area here. This is my sister's area here that's not being used for anything. And, um, it's gonna be, uh, fourteen by eight.
Okay, so just, am I understanding, the only non-compliance is that it should be five feet from the fence, and you're proposing eighteen inches from the fence, but that happens to be your sister on the other side?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we-
There is an existing, um, fence and hedge.
I think with the fence and hedge, for me, that makes it not a concern, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, suppose it, it's not a structure that's gonna last forever either.
There'll be, there'll be enough room.
I'm just thinking of future owners who might not agree to these setback arrangements, so.
I'm, I'm comfortable.
How does that work, when it's an arrangement between two butters?
Well, it's not an arrangement, we would just be approving it, and then if somebody came to buy the sister's property, they would just be like, oh, there's a shed there, and they would just buy it seeing the shed that is there.
Okay, yeah. It's a simple request, I, I can understand why you wanna put it where you're proposing, there's already a pad there.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second, yes.
With standing conditions as applicable?
Standing conditions, indeed.
And, sorry, are you seconded?
Oh, yeah. Do, just one question, did, if ownership were to change, do, do we have to be concerned about anything down?
No, you, you've given them a special permit, which gives them the relief to keep it there as long as they keep it there.
Okay, so-
So if they, if there's, if they sell it, the next person, uh, can pick up. You can limit it to the existing, uh, peti- petitioner, but that's tied up to you and based on considerations that-
Entirely up to them or entirely up to-
It's up to the board, I mean, you can recommend that the ZBA limit it to the petitioner. But if the, if you don't have a concern about it, you don't have to.
Okay, well, the only concern is that if you get to do it, and then your neighbor wants to do the same thing, and, you know, that, that's the type of-
But each case is taken on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, so is it simple enough to just put that language in there? That it would be with, for the duration of your ownership of that law?
So the permit, the, so the permit is limited to the petitioner. Do you understand what, do you understand what that means?
Right, so what do you care? But it's just-
I mean, when we take it down, will we just give it to them?
Yeah. Well, no, that the future owner, um, would not be grandfathered in to do something like that.
The permit goes with the owner, it does not go with the property.
I see, okay.
That's, I'm, no, I'm saying that, I'm saying that's what you're asking for.
Yes.
Normally, the permit, unless you vote otherwise, the permit goes with the property. So that if, and in the future anybody buys it, they have the same rights. You can limit it to just the petitioner.
That's, I think, is a simple solution.
So if this property is ever passed down or purchased, is it necessary that we ask that the owners knock down this shed? Um, if it's a, if it's an awesome shed, and it increases the property value and everything, I don't understand why it would be necessary to ask to only assign, to only assign the permit to the petitioner.
Just make- I'm not recommending it, I'm just responding to a question.
And I, I am recommending, there's two concerns. A, if everyone on your block wanted to do the same thing, and we let you do it and can't let other people do it, because it sets a precedent. That's one concern.
We really don't deal with precedent. If somebody, whoever's on the block suddenly appears here, we can grant someone to not some-
The, the courts have determined that you're not bound by precedent. And, and, and basically what you're doing, every time you vote to recommend a permit, you're voting to recommend, give, you're giving, you're, what's my way of wording this? Every time you vote a permit, you are bringing up the same possibility that someone else will wanna do the same thing.
Okay, okay. Well, if we attach it to the owner, not the property, then a future owner wouldn't, for example, be grandfathered in that they have a foundation, and they can therefore build on that foundation, you know, building on the footprint.
Once we grant the permit and they install a shed, it is a legally existing structure at that location. And whether they sell a property or, or whatever happens, that shed is there legally.
So, wait, I, I, is your concern more that they, a future owner could build something else?
Yeah, like, I mean, I've dealt with this on many projects where we have FAR limitations and things like that. Um, if there was a footprint of a shed that once existed, that's fair game for being able to erect a, a new structure on that existing foundation.
A, a, a new, a, a new structure only of the size you are approving, not, or you would recommend approval for now. They couldn't build a bigger one without coming back to the board.
If, God forbid, that shed burns down, putting another one there would require the same process that they're going through now. Either for, uh, for the current owners or for any future one.
I think we all wanna see you able to get this shed built.
Can I just-
And we need to understand the, um, precedent we're setting.
Anyway, it's been moved and seconded, yes?
With that condition?
Any other comments with conditions?
With the condition that it be limited, that it run with the, uh, petitioner and not the land.
Well, it does.
Excuse me, the gentleman who would like to, so, he'd like to speak. Let's let the gentleman speak.
Um, don't, don't take this out of context, but, yes, what you're saying is that if, if we sell the house and move on, the new owners have a shed on their yard, that if we, if that permit dies when we leave, that means they have an illegal structure on their property, it doesn't seem to-
So, so they have two options, they either demolish it, or they come back to the board to seek a permit on their own.
Okay.
I mean, they-
And, and as Alan, or I think it was Alan, no, Eric, who, if we're early, it will affect the property value.
Where, I mean, I mean, wouldn't, like, if they sold their property, they would probably sell that shed with the property. And that would transfer over to them, to, to the new owners.
Not with the, not with the, uh, the recommendation for that condition that's been motion made. But it's up to the board to determine whether you all want that or not.
It seems kind of arbitrary that we're asking the future owners of this property, whether it be a child or a family member, to come back into the planning board and request that their shed isn't demolished. Like, there's a structure, there's a foundation in place. I would motion to assign the shed to the property, so it's there in perpetuity.
Yeah, I would agree with that, 'cause we're not even sure, I mean, this is a hypothetical situation, that the realtor would even, like, abide by the rules and-
Right, it's not gonna be an easy condition to monitor in the future.
Yeah.
I also ag- I understand Sarah's concerns, because what I think I'm hearing is that you're concerned that future owners could kind of like, like, keep encroaching on more zoning rules, and could be like, oh, well, we wanna demolish and build four condos, and that's fine, because there was a shed here before. So it's okay if we expand the footprint. But I think that, given that the shed is like, very separated from the house and everything, and then even to, to propose changing it from a shed to a, a tiny apartment, that it becomes like residential, like, so no matter what, they would have to come back for more approvals, so I don't think that it, right?
Yeah, they would only, it would only ever come up if they were proposing to do something in that area, and they would not be grandfathered in for building within the setback. But I think that's the simplest way to resolve it. It would only ever come up in the, the off-chance that a future owner-
Purchase a property and then be visited by the building committee, a building inspector, and told that the property is illegal.
It's just a, a provision that we can write into it, it'll probably never come up.
It can come up, and if it is a provision, the-
Okay, well, then what's-
Building inspector can say, oh, that shed isn't technically supposed to be on the property. And I think that's unfortunate for-
And it's a first-tier dollar fund.
The future owners of this property.
It's, it would become existing non-compliant, and- John, what is the best way to handle this?
You're asking for my recommendation. My recommendation would be approval with the standard conditions.
The standard, standard conditions?
Yeah.
I motion to approve with the standard conditions.
Second?
And, all right, so let's move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a, are you opposed?
Yeah, I, no, I don't know. I.
Okay.
I do appreciate the discussion, though.
Yeah, it was a good discussion, actually. December thirteenth, here. And, um, if you see me tomorrow, I can give you back your, uh, your plan. Um, I have a meeting, uh, nine to eleven, so, um-
This is just one sale. And then everyone on the block, I'm saying, they're all gonna ask the same thing. So if there's some, um, checkpoint Charlie, so it's within- A shed is the least of our worries, because it's not permanent. But it's, I wanna know that there's a mechanism for these things where, at one point, whether it's even start proposing the same thing.
Yeah, one more case.
All right, um, we have case twenty-two dash thirty-two at four sixteen Crescent Avenue. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Four seventy-one Eastern Avenue in Chelsea, I'm here in support of the, uh, the owner of the property.
Juan Pimentel, Juan Pimentel, owner of the four sixteen Crescent Ave. Currently tenant in the second floor unit. And would like, I would like to make the first floor resident commercial turn into a resident unit as well.
It's a mixed use at the moment, there is a market on the first, on the, on the side here that you see there. Food preparation and a whole bunch of, uh, chaos going on. And we just wanna convert this into a simple two-family property. So we've issued a variance, and I believe the other application that we submitted, special permit. And the last meeting we were here, they requested- And the last meeting we were here, they requested us to submit some plans as to the proposed, look of the outside and the inside of how we would look as a two-unit. So we did provide that to John, I believe it was yesterday. And it's right here.
And, and I sent a copy to all, all the board members.
Yes. So we're asking you to support us with this two-family property now.
So that's the existing first floor, that's where the convenience store is now.
So this is the retail?
Yes.
And that's your existing second floor, which is two, two-bedroom?
Two-bedroom, yep. And on the next slide.
So you're gonna be keeping the flat, the way it's flat right now?
Yeah, we're not doing any structural building. We're just remi, changing the floor layout to a residential layout, commercial layout to a residential layout. Two-bedroom.
I'll be a little bit sad to see it go. I think it's kinda cute how it's kind of in the middle of nowhere as the only, the only commercial spot.
Well, the neighbors are all gonna be very happy, they're all gonna plan out a party.
My, my sister, who lives in New Hampshire several months ago, sent me a TikTok featuring the birria tacos from, from your restaurant.
Oh, God.
Yes, I have, I have friends that, that like the tacos. We informed her that we want to do this, cuz it's different, it's different when you live there. It's just, it attracts some, so much other stuff that it's not-
It's totally understandable, yeah.
Plus she has another location in Everett.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So that's what we bring to you guys who vote on.
So are there two entrances?
There are two entrances, there's one entrance here.
Yep.
And there's, there's the entrance there, so like, it's on the term, on the term title.
Yeah.
And, uh, existing windows, those are not getting added, that they already existed, that's means they're addressed with all places.
Yeah, presumably, it's just not shown on the, on the right picture.
There you have it, that, that's the door to the back door. There you have it, entrance, aren't there any here?
Yeah.
Back entrance there, that's accessible.
Where's, I mean, is there a ba- bathroom?
Bathroom, we're right here.
Okay.
Same layout as the store that's going in, so your bathroom, maybe there's a door.
How much square feet is the?
The footprint is not changing?
The layout is not wrong, it's just the, the structure's not wrong, it's just the layout-
Yeah, okay. Okay, and, and it's, the special permit is triggered because of change in use.
No, it's because of-
This space is gonna be used with what it is right now. So basically, what they have right now is a layout, it's pretty much the same layout. It's just a full kitchen's gonna be added, a whole bathroom's gonna be added. And, uh, doors and windows as well.
Changing from what, present?
Well, it's changing a non-conforming structure.
Oh, right.
Okay, so it's subject to a whole different-
Right, the structure does not meet existing setbacks for zoning, it's not enough lot area, it'd be seventy-five hundred square feet for two families, only a forty, uh, fourteen-eleven. And, um, open space and parking.
Okay, and that, that all comes about because of change in use, but those things were already non-compliant.
Exactly, correct, but they are-
In a different way, because it was commercial versus residential.
But because it is a new use, they have to meet the requirements of a new use.
And cuz now there's an extra unit, so that the number of parking spaces, et cetera, does that change?
Actually, it'll, it will go down, the, the off-street parking for retail is based on the square footage, one for every three hundred square feet. The off-street parking for a single family is two.
These are crazy requirements, thirty-five hundred square feet per unit? For the, like, the minimum lot area per dwelling?
Well, when you take the required, when, when you take the re- The minimum lot area, you, uh, minimum per unit is you take the size of the, uh, building on, uh, by the lot and it comes up to seven hundred and five square feet for this, in this case. There's only fourteen hundred and eleven squ-, it's only a fourteen hundred and eleven square foot lot. Two units on it, you divide it by two, so it's seven hundred and five per unit.
Can you see the exterior elevations? I just wanna see how those are gonna change. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You want the plans that were up previously or do you wanna?
No, the, the exterior elevations, cuz it's really all that's gonna be-
Nothing's going on?
Somewhere.
Um, so the facade, is that changing at all?
It will in future.
Oh, okay, I see.
We wanna open up more to grow.
Before you spend more, okay, okay, cuz it, there's a little room for improvement aesthetically.
Oh, no.
Okay. As charming as it is.
Is this going to impact the other apartment at all? Like entrances, exits?
Mostly. Same, the, the second being entrances, available, so it's, 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 uh, basically an emergency.
Yeah.
Emergency access, that's a, struggling in fact, it's still staying in the same lot. You just have to be able to let it out.
Existing exterior.
No, this is not a main street, this is a really quiet street where there's a, a lot of two families and single families. So this is the only business on that street.
This, this is an R-one district which only allows, uh, one and two families on seventy-five hundred square feet. The, talking about the site with the building department, they said they do get complaints about the variety store for a number of reasons, one is the trash disposal and the other one is, um, frequently a lot of noise associated with people stopping by for the food and then eating on-site.
Is it, um, safe to assume that all of the signs are gonna be taken off?
Can you talk into the microphone when you answer?
Yes, the signs will be taken down.
Signs will be taken off, yes.
And it will be repainted.
It will. It'll look presentable at least, for now, until we keep going.
So you're planning to update the facade into a more residential look over time, but you don't have those plans yet?
Like, so far, we, we, we changed the windows so they could look more residential, not the, the traditional knock-down windows that they use. So we're gonna go with triple-pane windows to fit the size that are fit there. And repaint the stucco and hopefully later on, we could do something about the, the facade.
Um, I'll make a, do we have any other conditions or?
Standing conditions as applicable. Design review, I'd like an outside lighting plan. You'll have to make a community improvement trust fund payment. And, uh, the resident of the new unit will not be eligible to participate in the on-street parking program.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part?
Also, standing conditions as applicable. Design review, you haven't given a plan for the exterior. Lighting plan for the exterior, if you're doing any, I just, just need to know. Community improvement trust fund payment because you're, uh, not meeting the open space and you're exceeding the number of units that would be, that would be allowed there by right. And, um, residents of the new unit shall not be eligible, eligible to participate in the city's resident sticker parking program.
Got it. I'll make a motion to recommend it to the ZBA with the conditions mentioned?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
December thirteenth, here.
Yes, agreed.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye-bye, that's your last case, just need a motion to adjourn.
She said they're going to a different location.
Oh, yeah, Everett, alright.
Oh, or Everett?
Need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, from us?
Yes.
Not from Tuck, uh, motion to adjourn.
I mean, you don't have to.
We can handle it.
Well, we have to let Ricky know.
No, we don't.
Anyone wanna second it?
A second for the motion to adjourn, anybody?
Alan, just second it.
I'll second that motion to adjourn.
Okay, so-
All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Sorry, that Tuck had to do it.